Alright, um, we're going to start the meeting. Alright.
You got Luis?
Yeah. He's on now, but... Because I'm on low battery right now.
Hey Luis, and the meeting's about to begin. Marci, you still there, right? Okay, um, everybody, can please... Have everybody's attention, please, uh, look at the mic. Elwood? Elwood? Can you take care of the sound system?
Oh, good. Is that working? Okay, great. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the... Mark, I'm sorry, the June twenty-third, twenty-fifteen, regular meeting. The time is now seven nineteen, and I call the meeting to a order. Carl, could you please call the roll?
Hey, yeah. John?
Here.
Doug?
There.
Luis?
And Marci?
Oh, is it Marci's phone?
Yeah.
Marci, oh, come here.
Okay. Um, okay, so we have a forum, we have only one absent, correct? Is that right? Right, so, yeah, six are present, we have a forum. The first item on the agenda is... Can we have silence, please? Okay. First item on the agenda is, uh, the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. I asked for a motion to approve the May twenty-sixth, twenty-fifteen meeting minutes as presented. Great, and waive the reading, correct? Alright, so, the minutes for, uh, the, in May twenty-sixth, um, regular meeting. Marci made the motion to approve the reading, I mean, the minutes as presented and to waive the reading. Is there a second to Marci's motion?
A second.
Dove seconds, okay. And, uh, is there any objection? Minutes are approved. The next item is... Next item on the agenda is, uh, the President's message. And, let me pull it up here. Just give me a minute. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank all the unit owners who have contacted management in the last few weeks regarding the Wilma Special Assessment Early Payoff Bonus. The office has received about fifty inquiries so far from unit owners interested in paying off their Hurricane Wilma Special Assessment ballots. And a number of owners, including myself, have already reaped the substantial savings available during the month of June. In the case of my one-bedroom unit, those savings will add up to about four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. For a two-bedroom unit owner, those savings will be, um, over, well over, six-hundred dollars. By paying off your special assessment three years early, you are not only saving yourself hundreds of dollars, but you are helping the association reduce its debt with Wells Fargo, for which we thank you. For those of you who haven't taken advantage of this opportunity as yet, there's still time, but you must act by June thirty. That's June thirty. Just visit the association office, or call nine-five-four-four-eight-four-nine-one-oh-six. Again, that number is nine-five-four-four-eight-four-nine-one-oh-six. Or send an email to manager@intlvillage.com. Again, that's manager@intlvillage.com. And you can find all these emails and phone numbers in your mailroom as well. And the subject line for that email should be "Wilma Payoff", and please include your name, phone, and unit number. And David will get back to you regarding what your balance is, and how much you will save by paying it off now versus later. On another topic, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank former board member Jerry Murrow for making a generous donation of three thousand dollars toward the association's ongoing building renovations project, which has allowed us to begin renovations in the Zurich Building. Jerry isn't here today, but please give him a big round of applause, everybody. Thank you, Jerry. So if anybody else is interested in making a donation to spend... I'm sorry, if anybody else is interested in making a donation to speed up the renovation work in your building, we'd be more than happy to accept your gift. It's not tax deductible, I apologize. But ju- just talk to David after the meeting, and he'll be happy to, uh, arrange that for you. And on that note, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy and safe Fourth of July. And now, let's get on with the rest of the meeting. And the next item, I believe, is the Treasurer's Report. Who, who's giving the Treasurer's Report today? Uh, did anybody prepare for the... If not, then David, could you sort of just go through the financials for us? Okay, and that would do us for the Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, the current month-to-date total payroll expenses is under budget by eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-one dollars.
The current... Actually, uh, David, um, since we want to get through this as quickly as possible, could you just read, like, the bottom line as far as what the savings are this month?
Certainly.
And what the savings are to date, that way...
Sure. The current month-to-date total expenses is under budget by thirty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars.
That's great.
And the current year-to-date total expenses is under budget by a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars.
That's excellent. Wonderful. Thank you, David. Your job well done on saving so much money. And, uh, the next item on the agenda, actually, stay out there, because I believe the next one is you, Manager's Report. And, and David, could you give us an update on the Axon thing, too?
Yeah.
If it's not already in there?
Yeah, it is. Okay, regarding Axon. We have received a new contract and a finance agreement. The down payment was given. The machines, as you see, there's two demos, washer and a dryer, in the lobby. And, um, they're sitting in the warehouse, okay, for the company that we purchased them from. However, there is a little bit of a snafu with Axon. They were sent a certified letter telling them to remove their machines by the end of this month, and this was sent last month. They are refusing to abide by that letter. We've had the association's attorney send them a letter. They're still telling us, "Too bad, they're not going to remove the machines until July thirty-first." So the new machines won't be in until the end of July, beginning of August.
And, and we're told that by, by the company that we're purchasing the new units from, that this is actually common. Unfortunately, these companies are very rarely cooperative. They don't like, you know, when we terminate their contract, and they're vengeful at the end. Even though we met the thirty-day requirement, because it didn't say it had to be by, by certified mail, we emailed them the requirement, uh, two, thirty-two days, actually, something like that.
Correct.
Um, but they said, but at the same time, we sent the letter. And they claimed that because the letter arrived, uh, you know, by the later, June fifth, that they're claiming that they didn't get the notice in time. But there, there's no provision in the contract that says it had to be by, by mail. So they, they're, they're literally just, you know, playing games. But unfortunately, the, the way that these people get away with it is because they know that it's more expensive for us to litigate and try to get an eviction notice on them. Uh, it's something like, I think, we were given a figure of like three thousand to get the eviction notice, and it still takes almost a month to get them evicted, so they all do that, unfortunately. So, uh, as a result of that, we may have to, maybe, you know, the only thing we can do is really let people know, take advantage of, of things like Better Business Bureau, uh, the, the other websites like yellowpages.com, to let people know about this particular company and the games they play, so they can avoid them. But as far as litigating, it would actually cost us more to try to force them out, unfortunately. And if we try to remove the machines, then we could be sued for damaging their machinery. So again, they know that, they know that, and that's how they get away with it. They know they can do this.
We don't, we don't, we have a contract with them.
We do have a contract with them? It's terminated technically, but they're claiming it's not, you know?
Alright, so we can use the money on our card a little longer, that's all.
That is correct.
Yes, so it's, so David, could you please...
No, Dave, it's not a biggie.
I understand that, but, but just, just, I think that, you know, also, everyone is aware of it, and, and we will, you know, put in a complaint with the Better Business Bureau, but that's all we can do, because it's not worth it, as you say. It's not a biggie, but still, it's, it's, it's really dishonest, and it's their way of extending their contract. So David, could you please prepare an updated notice, uh, send it to me for approval, and then remove all the, all the notices that are up there so people know not to throw away their card? That's the most important thing. So, let's see, what, what is the, the next item on your man... Go ahead, finish your Manager's Report.
Alright, just a few more items. Fire Ranger has performed their annual inspection and certification of all the fire extinguishers on the property, and I included the reports in your Management Report. The new security golf court was ordered and should be here by the end of next week. Beach around are located and repaired, two leaks in the large outdoor pool. However, there is still a small third leak that they have to come back and find and repair. Central Security performed their annual inspection and certification of the Bordeaux and Nottingham Buildings. And Maintenance has ordered the new metal downspouts necessary to repair and replace the deteriorating, uh, ex, uh, existing downspouts on some of the buildings. And one last thing, the IT department has completed the installation of the new security camera systems in the Interlochen and Grenoble Buildings, and I believe he started on the Saint Murets today. Uh, he wanted to start on the Marseille, but it's a different building configuration than the others, and it's difficult uh, because of where the elevator is. So he's going to have to rethink how to do that one, but in the meantime, we started on a building that was familiar, uh, that they, you know, same style building as the others, so he started on that today. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, David. There, there are no items from your report that require a vote, correct?
That's correct.
So the next item is the Sales and Leasing Report. And, uh... Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I tried to speed it up. Okay, so for the period, um, closing on June sixteen, or from the period from May twentieth to June sixteen, we have the following, following transactions. Uh, we have eight leases. Eight, seven of those were approved, one, one was declined. S two N, one bedroom, one thousand-two-hundred, approved. S two R, that's a studio for one thousand, uh, fifty, approved. I two J, two bedroom, one thousand-three-hundred, approved. N two, S two K, one bedroom, nine, nine-hundred-twenty-five, approved. And one W, two bedroom, one thousand-three-hundred, approved. Uh, Y one W, two bedroom, one thousand-two-hundred, declined. B two B, two bedroom, one thousand-two-hundred-fifty, approved. Z one N, one bedroom, nine-hundred, approved. Uh, in addition, we, uh, twenty-four rollovers were submitted, and processed from May twentieth in, to June sixteen, uh, all of the rollover leases were approved. And then, in addition to that, we had, uh, four purchases. Uh, Z three E, this is a two-bedroom, and was sold for sixty-five, um, thousand, in the form of a cash payment. Uh, O three T, two-bedroom, for seventy-seven-five-hundred, is, this is, uh, partially financed and partially cashed. O one F, purchase, one bedroom, forty-one thousand, cash purchase, approved. M three U, uh, one bedroom, for fifty, uh, thousand-five-hundred, it was also a cash purchase. And then, um, I have the report for all the rentals that the association collects. Uh, we collected this term, uh, for the month of June, actually, three thousand-five-hundred dollars, and I'd like to tell the board that unfortunately, the bank foreclosed on one of our units, Z three B. Uh, the tenant, uh, whose lease was supposed to end on October, was basically forced by the bank to, to vacate the unit. So we are not going to be able to collect rent for the month of July on, okay? Uh, however, we have one unit that is going to be ready to be on the market. Uh, Z three R, that's a studio, and I'd like to recommend the board to rent, uh, said unit for eight-hundred dollars. And that is, any questions from the audience? No? Okay. Boy? You're welcome.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the minutes... I'm sorry, not the minutes, the Sales and Leasing Report, um, and to ratify all the actions taken by the Sales and Leasing Committee contained in that report. Uh, do I hear a sec? Okay. So Marci makes the motion, and do we have a second? I'll, I'll second it. Uh, any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. Okay, the next item is... The next item is the forty-year certification, part three. David, would you like me to explain that, or, um, do you have... Okay, I'll explain. The forty years, uh, as maybe you recall, we had the first two parts of the forty-year certification that were due last year, and we completed them. Uh, because the way that it works is, when the buildings, uh, are forty years old, calculated from the time that they come on the tax rolls, they're then due for the forty-year. However, this, uh, particular community was built over a couple of years. So the first ten already came due last year, and we completed that process, but the final two came online in nineteen-seventy-five. So as a result, we have two more to go this year. The Zurich and the Nottingham, which were the last two built, hence, they're the last two numbers, um, thirty-six-fifty and thirty... No, sorry. Thirty-seven, right, I'm sorry. Thirty-seven-fifty and thirty-seven-sixty, those were the last two that were built in nineteen-seventy-five, so they're now due for the forty-year certification. We haven't actually gotten the letters from, from the city yet, but we did get an email from them telling us that to expect them by the end of this month. So rather than wait until our next regular meeting, a month from now, to begin the process, I felt that it should be on this agenda, so that we could at least provisionally approve it and say, "We, we approve it pending the letter." Um, not sign any contract until the letter arrives. But since they're telling us to expect it any day now, may as well do it now. So I, I'll ask for a motion to, um, I'm sorry, David, could you tell us who the person is, uh, that, or the, I'm sorry, the contractor is, the engineer is, who's, who's, uh, put in a proposal?
The engineer is the same engineer who did the other buildings, that's Murat Kazikli. He's a licensed PE, uh, and this is his proposal for the forty-year certification for the Zurich and the Nottingham. It's fifteen-hundred dollars each building for a total of three thousand dollars.
Well, it's the same price as all the other...
Same price as the other buildings.
And, um, as far as, you know, as far as, we don't have to do competitive bidding when it's under, uh, I think it's ten percent of the budget, so this is way on...
Ten percent of the budget.
It's a thousand. So there's no need to get another engineer. Um, he's done a good job on all the rest, so we feel that it would be advisable to continue using him for these two. So I need a motion essentially to, uh, to approve the, uh, I mean, to accept his proposal for three thousand... Exactly, okay, so, Marci just made the motion to, uh, accept the proposal from, what's the name of the company again?
Uh, it's Murat.
Kazikli PE?
Kazikli.
Okay, engineer, okay. So, and it's, what's the initials for, for engineer?
PE.
PE, okay. Forty-year certification, to accept the forty-year certification engineering proposal from Murat Kazikli PE, pending, uh, pending, pending receivable of the forty-year letter from the city. That was Marci's motion. Um, do I hear a second? I'll, I'll second it, I'll second that one. Um, and, uh, is there any discussion on the board about that? Any, any questions from the, uh, audience, from the membership?
What is the fifteen-hundred dollars? For him to say that there's nothing wrong with cosmetics?
No, the fifteen-hundred dollars is for him to actually perform a comprehensive engineering assessment, um, of the building.
And give us a report.
And give us a report, yes.
Basically, his fee.
That's his debt, his fee per building, yes.
And he says everything is structurally perfect.
Well, we don't know yet what he's going to say, because it hasn't happened yet.
How about the buildings that we paid for, right? That's happened.
Yes, because they were.
Are there any problems with structure?
No. Well, with those buildings, that there was not. Okay? And, but, but as I said, we, we can't, we can't, you know...
Balcony falls.
We can't set tough, tell you yes or no until he's completed these, these additional, um, two buildings. So, uh, if that's the last question, is there any objection, um, on the board to this motion? Hearing none, it's approved. And, um, the next, next item on the agenda is, uh, the Fining Committee Recommendations. David, could you take that one?
Okay, a fining committee was appointed, and we had two grievance hearings, one on June second, the other one on June fourth. And the chairman of the Fining Committee sent me an email stating that the Grievance Fines Committee has reviewed the two cases that they presided over and have come to a decision in both. In the case involving Miriam Gordon, the committee recommends in a majority vote of three to two to fine her a hundred dollars for the violation. In the case involving Jeffrey Edwards, the committee recommends to fine him at the maximum allowed by state law, which is a hundred dollars per violation up to a thousand dollars for failing to comply to the association's documents.
Okay, um, David, could you, that, that's very brief. Could you explain what the first one was for?
The first violation was for witnessing, uh, Miriam Gordon feeding the ducks on the property.
Not for witnessing, but actually for feeding the ducks.
For actually feeding the ducks, yes.
And that's a problem, because, you know, it creates a hazard for people. Um, I, I happen to know, uh, one particular owner, um, some time ago, approached me and said that she suffered a severe injury from slipping on the duck, I'm, I'm sorry, on the duck poop, um, on the walkway. So, so it's a duck poop, on the walkway.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a serious health hazard. Um, slipping falls also cause liability for the association. In addition to that, um, it, it creates a road hazard. Uh, there have been more than one occasion where I've seen a dead duck on the road. It's hu- inhumane to the ducks, and it's also, you know, very nerve-wracking for the drivers, and could cause an accident by drivers trying to avoid these ducks. The ducks should be left at the, at the lake to forage for themselves and not be fed. And unfortunately, if you go to the Saint Murets where she, where this particular person lives, it is surrounded by ducks.
Yeah.
And it's unused. David, can I just, I'm sorry. I just want to ask David a question. Hypothetically, if this wasn't a violation of our dogs, just devil's advocate, is it still somehow a violation?
There is a city ordinance, of which I quoted in my letter to her.
Right.
Okay. Uh, but that's up to the city if they want to fine her.
Right.
But the information will now be...
So the city ordinance prohibits...
Prohibits feeding of wildlife, yes.
So in other words, if it wasn't, if it wasn't in the dogs, um, that, that we prohibit feeding of the ducks, then it still would be a violation...
Of city ordinance.
Of city ordinance that obviously supersedes international village.
Correct.
Does this, is there a city ordinance for dogs in private communities?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so there is a distinction?
Absolutely.
Okay, just checking. Okay, um, so, and on the second one, could you explain on more...
The second one stems from, um, a breach of the association's documents where you people passed an amendment back in two thousand and ten regarding the cabanas and the electric, uh, the electricity. Back in two thousand and ten, you all voted so that any time a cabana changes ownership, the new owner will now become responsible for their own electric. Right now, you are all paying for their electric. Okay? So the association had an electrician come in, pull a permit, and run all new trunk lines to those eight units. Okay, there were meters, or cans, for where the meters would be, and new panels were put in each unit.
Except for doggy.
I've never been in it, so I don't know. I can only tell you what the paperwork says. In any case, uh, Mr. Edwards is aware of all this, and he basically refused to install the electric in his unit. He has been sent numerous letters, two or three certified letters. He still refused to do it, and, uh, so this information was brought to the Grievance Committee, and apparently, they have decided to fine him the maximum allowable by law.
Because he's been actually told how many times, he's...
He's...
He's only here for a year. He's been told repeatedly, time and time again.
I have spoken with him on numerous occasions, so, send him certified letters. I've been in his apartment with the electrician.
Right. And the electrician, the, the electrician basically certifies it that, you know, he...
Well, his electrician was saying that the panel that was installed is not correct. However...
But the city says it is.
The city, at the time it was installed, it was all approved and CO'd by the city. I have a little paperwork, so...
So, uh, yeah, so basically, again, this is something he's been told for months and months, it's over a year.
Since I've been here, yeah.
And he's made no effort to change it. And in fact, um, you know, even more galling is, this gentleman, Jeffrey Edwards, is a snowbird. He's here six months, gone six months. The last time he left, and I don't know, maybe someone could check back now, but the last, last summer, um, I got a call from somebody in the cabana next door, and she couldn't sleep, she said, because... This was in the summer, when he wasn't here, he'd left for the six months to go up to, um, up north. And the blinds were just slamming so hard against his sliding glass door in the back, that it was keeping the next-door neighbor awake. So it's like he deliberately, you know, cranked up his AC all the way just before he left to go up north for six months, just to, just to be able to, like, just say, like, "Screw you" to the association. "You're going to pay my electricity for the next six months when I'm not even there." And, and the blinds were slamming so hard against the, the sliding glass door, that the, the person living, uh, in the cabana next door called me and complained and, and said, you know, "I can't sleep because of the blinds slamming against that glass door." Just him saying, "Screw you" to the association, so we can pay his electrical. So it's not just that he's not complying, it's he, like, giving a big thumbs up to the association and saying, "Screw you." And he's been doing it for over a year now, because he's had that unit for over a year. So, um, again, you said it's essentially that the, the Fining Committee, um, has voted to fine a hundred dollars per violation, but I don't know what you mean by per violation being per month?
It's a hundred dollars per day.
Per day?
For the single violation.
It's not per month, it's per day?
It's per day.
Okay, so essentially, it's up to...
Maximum of a day.
Maximum of a thousand.
Maximum of ten days, which is a thousand dollars.
So in other words, he needs to, to correct it, um, as soon as possible, in less than ten days, otherwise, it's going to go to a thousand.
Can I ask a question?
And now, before, before you do, um, we don't have a motion on the table, so I need to make a motion in a second.
No, I just wanted to find out, why couldn't we have cut this, this, this off before...
We can't, because...
You, you can't.
You can't, because all of the cabanas are hooked up to the trunk line.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, so...
All of the cabanas are on...
Hold on a second. Guys, I need, we need to follow decorum. We pass some decorum rules. The decorum is, there's a motion in a second, then discussion on the board, and then we open it up to the membership. So let's follow decorum here. Uh, we need a... John? Actually, actually, David, could you take this flash here? Actually, yeah, go ahead. Marci, say that again?
Well, and actually, it's illegal to shut off electricity. You, you can, as a landlord, you cannot terminate electricity on a, on a unit. It's illegal.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we, we need a motion essentially to approve the committee's recommendations. So I asked for a motion, uh, essentially to approve the committee's recommendations, which were, again, a hun- a hundred dollars, um, in, um, in the first case, per violation. So if it happens, if it happens again, then it'll go up, but right now, it's a hundred only for the first one. For the second one, a hundred per day, until the violation is remedied. Uh, that, that's the motion that we need to approve the committee's recommendations. So does anybody make that motion? I, I don't hear a, a motion. Do we, do we have a motion?
The one that puts off to the ten days.
Carl, would you like to make the motion? Just so we can, we can't have a discussion without a motion. I can't... I can't even accept your comment, you understand? Under the decorum rule, unless we have a motion and a second, you understand? Okay, so Carl, can we have a motion set up? Carl makes the motion. Do we have a second? Um, I'll second, uh, for discussion, so now we can have, okay, now, David.
You're gonna fine the guy a thousand dollars, and if you say you can't cut the electricity off, he can just pay the thousand dollars.